We're watching live coverage of the Lee County School Board. Everybody please rise for the pledge and remain standing for moment. Pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm going to call the meeting to order. They get a motion to approve the agenda. So move. Have a motion on second.
Second.
In discussion. On purpose say aye. Agenda is approved. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of April 8th, 2014 for our board meeting?
So move.
Have a motion on the second.
Second.
Have a motion, second in discussion. On purpose say aye. Those minutes are approved. This time we would like to recognize the Teacher of the Year from each school and also the Division Teacher of the Year. Mr. Carter and myself will come down to the front of the stage. If we would call your names, would you please come and get your plaque and shirt?
Let me start out and say a little bit about the Teacher of the Year program. The Virginia Teacher of the Year Program honors teachers who represent the best in teaching in the Commonwealth of Virginia and the nation. For more than forty years, Virginia has participated in the National Teacher of the Year Program. The program is open to all teachers who hold a current renewable Virginia Teaching License. Teachers must be employed in a Virginia public school or an accredited non-public school. Candidates should be dedicated, knowledgeable, and skilled, and plan to continue in an active teaching status. We do have a Teacher of the Year that was selected from the faculty of each of our schools in Lee County. And from that group of candidates from each school, we do have a Division Teacher of the Year. We would like to recognize all of our representatives at this time from each school. As I call your names, if you would please come forward, Mr. Harper will present you with your plaque. And we also have a shirt for you as a token of our appreciation for your hard work and dedication and being recognized by your faculty as being an outstanding teacher. And you certainly deserve this honor, so we appreciate you and thank you so much.
And would you also, once you come and get your plaque, would you stay up here until we're completely through, please, so everybody can see you for one?
Dryden Elementary School, Emma Ruth Garrett. Eltonob Elementary School, Kathy Napper. Eagledale Elementary School, Jacqueline Robinson. Gladwoods Elementary School, Paula Barker. Johnson Middle School, Teresa Witt. Lee High School, Angela Thomas. Lee County Career and Technical Center, Joanne Wilson. Pennington Middle School, Kelly Leonard. Rose Hill Elementary School, Teresa Eldridge. St. Charles Elementary School, Roberta Gibbons. Head Start, Dorothy Zentz. Okay, that concludes our school candidates. At this time, we would like to announce our division-level Teacher of the Year that will go on to represent us in the regionals. I'd like to start out and tell you a little bit about the philosophy of teaching for this particular teacher. She says, "My philosophy of teaching can be tied to three statements by three different women who became my heroes of teaching even to this day." Those statements. "If you had only tried, you would have gotten a hundred." That's Debbie Garrett, a high school teacher. "If someone can make a ninety-nine on my midterm exam, then I will make a final exam no one can ace." That was Professor Nadine Keen. "You worry about the French, let me worry about your grade." That's Dr. Martha Brandt. And from each of these women, this teacher says, "I have learned three basic beliefs that are essential for each student to know. As a teacher, I try to instill each belief in my students. If I do anything right in my teaching career, let it be these three things. The rest will follow." Belief in self, challenge, and just learn. Angela Thomas, congratulations.
At this time, Mr. Carter will discuss schools with the highest percentage of attendance.
Our schools with the highest percentage of attendance for this previous month are St. Charles Elementary, number one, with ninety-seven point one percent. And Johnson Middle, second place, ninety-four point six percent. So congratulations to St. Charles and Johnson Middle.
Next we recognize the Flat Stanley Project, Katie Middleton, second grade class at Dryden Elementary, Mr. Carter.
Yes, Mrs. Katie Middleton, second grade class at Dryden Elementary School, has experienced the sights, excuse me, the sights and cultures of twenty-five different U.S. states and eight different countries through a book-inspired male correspondence project called The Flat Stanley Project. So these second graders were able to experience the world outside their classroom. And Miss Ely says they just learned so much from it. But each board member has an article that was published on The Flat Stanley Project in the Kingsport Times-Mood about Miss Ely's second grade class.
Next we recognize the Lee NJ ROTC National Academic Championship, Mr. Carter.
Chief Skiba sent us some information on these students. And the Lee NJ ROTC unit recently competed in the National Academic Championship. And the unit finished in the upper-three percent nationwide, finishing a very respectful fifty-sixth place. Out of the hundred-and-eighty teams that competed from our region of Virginia, Delaware, and Maryland, and our team finished fifth. The unit also received notification that they were designated by the U.S. Navy as an honor unit, placing them in the top thirty percent of all units nationwide. It is very commendable considering that they are one of the smallest units in the nation and one of the most remote. Two candidates also received four-year Army ROTC scholarships. One scholarship to James Adair, who received his scholarship, is worth an approximate two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Mr. Justin Eldridge also received a four-year Army ROTC scholarship that is worth about a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. So I'd like to congratulate Chief Skiba and these students for their participation.
The VSB A Art Contest, Mr. Carter.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Let me just tell you that Roberta Gibbons came in and we'd like to present her with her plaque.
Sure.
Roberta, would you come forward, please?
I was at the wrong place at the break time.
Okay, to recognize the students once again that participated in the VSB A Art Contest this past Thursday. First-place winner from elementary is Hayley Crockett. Second, first-place winner from the middle school is Amber Levesey. And first-place winner from high school is Emily Darter. So again, we want to congratulate those students.
Now it's time to recognize the Lee High School Art, the chorus, and the band, Ms. Brandt.
Katie, I did have that certificate for each of the individuals that entered the dance movement class session. Amber Levesey, she was here. They don't clean. And then Emily Darter. Some of you often seem to work, but I might let you look at. And Carly Crockett. Okay, the other recognitions are going to be the chorus and band. And I'm going to let that staff come up and do presentations of recognizing those awards and competitions they participated in.
Can we start with those students that received Junior High All District Chorus Honors? First of all, from Thomas Walker, Kennedy Ray. And Hunter Isling with alternate. From Pennington Middle School, Krista Edwards. From Johnson Middle School, Cassie Flanders. Junior High Old District from Lee High School, Austin Kelly. And Kayla Burchett. Senior High Old District Chorus Students from Thomas Walker's, Andy Gillum. From Lee High School, Josh Bocock. Also from Lee High School, Logan Strange. Angela Reyes. Brianna Dallas. Megan Clas. Erica Collins. Dylan Tomlinson. And Esther Stiggy. And Josh Robbin. And finally, the first student from Lee High School to receive All-State Chorus Honors is Dylan Tomlinson. Dylan is here tonight because he is in a vocal competition in Kingsport, so congratulations to all of you. Okay, and for middle school band, we're going to recognize some students who participated in Virginia Tech Honor Band this year. Adam Wright. And Hannah Martin. Two of our students went to All District Honors Band. They auditioned in December and went in the end of January, early February. And Sawyer Miller. Okay, and then on May the 2nd, I took a group of students. So we had forty-two out of fifty-two of our middle school band students that are in seventh and eighth grade. They went to Trills and Thrills Music Festival. And they performed three selections for adjudicators. And at that festival, they earned a superior rating. And I have, I know I have some that are in the audience because I've seen them. So if you are a member of the seventh and eighth grade band that went to Trills and Thrills, could you please come forward? Just to give you a little bit of background, these students also participated in Concert Assessment, which is like their band SOL test. It's the closest thing we have to an SOL test. And after their band SOL test, the concert assessment, the students scored an excellent rating. This was in March, so from March to early May, they improved enough to earn a superior rating. At the concert assessment in March, they did earn a superior rating in sight reading, which means they read music they've never seen before as a group. And have to do it as well as they can do it. So they have earned a really good score and have improved. Let's give them one more round of applause. Thank you.
I'm here representing the high school students who participated in the band events for this past academic semester. The first seven students that I'm going to recognize are a group of students who were selected to participate in the 2014 Virginia Tech Honor Band. And these four gentlemen are Mr. Isaac Campbell, Isaac Miller, Jacob Polly, and Dylan Tomlinson. They couldn't be here not to receive recognition and experience. Another honor band that we had that the high school students participated in was the 2014 VBODA District Seven Honor Band. This is, we had students participate in three of the four levels of the Honor Band. And these students are Ms. Blair Dean, Mr. Tater Hans, Mr. Zachon Trees, Ms. Emma Poe, Mr. Chisiri, Mind and Lucipong, Mr. Isaac Miller, Mr. Elijah Polly, Mr. Jacob Polly, Mr. Isaac Campbell, Mr. Dylan Tomlinson, and Mr. Patrick Allen. So if those students are here. And of course, all these students that are listed are also participating in other activities as well. So we've got a couple on the soccer field, a couple with the tennis team, so we're just all over the place. The next group I'd like to recognize is a group of students who were selected to participate with the Lincoln Memorial University Honor Band this year. And these students are Blair Dean, Alex Goins, Cory Stewart, Alex Alsop, Patrick Allen, Emma Poe, Brandon Burke, Noah Aldridge, and Mr. Jesse Gillum. Back like other VBODA events, the entire band, back in March, as Ms. Hans mentioned, there was a state concert assessment event that Lee High participated in this year. And it is my pleasure to announce that this year, in their concert performance and in their sight reading, they received superior ratings and everything for overall superior rating, so I think that's a pretty big deal, so I was pretty excited about that. And the last group of students I'm going to recognize, we had an in-house Rastlin tent that started here at the high school. This is completely student-run. They write their music, they play their stuff, I'm just here to open the door so they can come and practice. They went to the VBODA District Seven State Sol Enzo Assessment Event last week. And this is the second year in a row that this group has received superior ratings in their performance evaluations. So I'd like to recognize those students as well. They are Mr., I shouldn't have done that on my paper, I'm just saying. Mr. Patrick Allen, Mr. Isaac Campbell, Mr. Tater Hans, Mr. Jacob Polly, and Mr. Dylan Tomlinson. Again, they're recipients of overall superior ratings. Thank you very much.
Now time for the public expression. Crystal Ailey here.
Mr. Carter, school board members, my name is Crystal Ailey. I'm the Family Consumer Spirits Teacher at the Lee County Career and Technical Center. I also have a club called The Family Career and Community Leaders of America, also known as FCCLA. We attended a state leadership conference in Virginia Beach, Virginia this past April. Students enrolled in my fax classes have the option of competing in a star event at the state level. They choose what star event they want to participate in, and then they also choose the topics. I had several students go, I have one here with me tonight. Jess Lamons and Caitlin Hines competed in advocacy. Their topic was advocating against teen suicide, and they placed bronze. Courtney Shoemaker and Autumn Bishop competed in entrepreneurship. They planned to open their own clothing store called Clothes Before Bros, and they also placed bronze. Michaela Sharp and Samantha Smith competed in life event planning where they planned a sweet sixteen birthday party, and they placed bronze. BJ Skilner competed in recycling redesign. He designed and made a dress out of recycled plastic Walmart bags, and he placed bronze. Maran McGarrett and Elizabeth Dean competed in life event planning. They planned a dorm room and placed bronze. Natasha Bishop and Alan Morris competed in illustrated talk. They compete, their topic was school bullying, and they placed silver. Kaitlyn Mansour competed in fashion design, and she trod with her project of a tulip paper wedding dress. Kaitlyn will also compete in her event fashion design at the National FCCLA State Conference, or FCCLA. or National FCCLA Conference in San Antonio, Texas this summer, July 5th through the 11th. This is a first for our chapter, this is a great opportunity for Kaitlyn, and has given recognition to our fax classes and to our FCCLA club. Everybody that came into the classroom, saw the dress standing there, and were like, oh my gosh, I want to make that dress, or I want to do that, and do this in the club. This is the first time that a student has qualified for nationals, and going to San Antonio will be a great academic experience for Kaitlyn. We are currently seeking more funding for this trip as well at school. Now here's Kaitlyn, and she's going to speak to you and show you her design.
Mr. Carter, board members, my name is Caitlyn Minter, I am currently enrolled in a fax class called Fashion Design. Being in FCCLA and competing at state level has taught me leadership and initiative. In fashion design class, I learned how to create a pattern and a garment from scratch. I took the knowledge from my fashion design class and incorporated it into my star event at the FCCLA State Leadership Conference. For my event, I had to create a portfolio and a display item. I chose to go the unconventional route and create recyclable rooms. I used such things as toilet paper magazines, sheer curtain, candy wrappers, and neckties. For my display item, I chose the toilet paper wedding dress. I sewed fabric chairs to make a line, then I used five squares of two ply toilet paper to make each rose, and they are all glued and hand-sewn on the line. I chose to make the dress tealing, which is right below the knees. The dress does have a zipper in the back. However, this is not the exact dress I took to state. Toilet paper was a boat ride across the state of Virginia, plus sewed it, not made. I tried to recreate my dress the best that I could. For my project, I also had to decide a name for my label. I have always had a label on mine since I started making clothing, and I chose Pure as my label. I do have business cards that I would like for each of you to have. I'm really excited about the opportunity to represent LCCTC and all of Lee County in nationals. I've never been to Texas, so this will be a great experience for me. I have high standards for myself to do well at nationals and come home with another trophy to make my family, school, and community proud. Thank you.
Anyone else want to take advantage of the public expression?
Hello, my name is Shashu, and I'm the parent of two children at Pennington Middle School. There are two issues that I would like to bring before the board tonight. First off, parents are being told that 6th grade band will probably not be offered next year at Pennington Middle. And I urge the board to reconsider this. My children were both just down here as part of the 7th, 8th grade band. And for a lot of children at our school, band is the only extracurricular opportunity they have. I understand that SOLs are important, I understand that our academics are important. But our children need an outlet, and for some of them, band is all there is. I feel like if we get rid of the 6th grade band in chorus, then the 7th grade band becomes the beginning band, and our children are missing out on opportunities. The second thing I feel like I need to address, I have contacted the school, the school board, and taken every avenue possible to address a faculty member at Pennington Middle School, who I feel like is doing our children a great disservice. He's here this evening, he required his classroom to be here to earn points because ninety percent of the children brought home an ad hoc progress report this term. And he's a first year civics teacher for Pennington Middle, it's Mr. Taylor. I am very involved in my children's classwork. Yes?
One second here, I'm not sure. So if you can mention names here, as far as personnel goes, Mr. Hobbs, if you want to.
I think perhaps she might wish to address the board in executive session.
I can leave that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, I'm here today for a lot of the same reasons that Lenny was here. I am Denise Glass, I've been a pretty successful singer-songwriter entertainer for about the last thirty years. The number one thing in my career, especially trying to make it in Nashville, that's held me back, is the fact that I never had the opportunity to learn to read music. I'm here today because I'm a former Lee County public student, a tax payer, and a mother of a child who attends Johnson Middle School. I've also heard these rumors that the elective of the 6th grade band is going to be taken out, and they're going to double up on math. Like I said, my son, he's in 6th grade at Johnson Middle School. I noticed at an early age that he also had a natural ear for music like myself. And I always wanted him to take a better route than what I did in my notes of read music because he wants to pursue a music career. When he entered the Johnson Middle School, he was very excited that he could take band. And the only problem was, he had failed his math exam because he was a D and F math student. So I had a meeting with the principal and said there has to be some way that I can get him into band. And thank God, some teacher stepped up and decided to teach my child, and others as well, this extra math class, so he could go to band. And I have seen my child struggle and break home failing grades for the past three years of his school year, his school career. No matter how much I tried, he hated going to school, he begged me not to make him go. So I signed him up for this band and put the fear on in him that if he started failing and doing bad, band was history for him. So it took about a week to see my son's attitude change. He wanted to go to school for once, he was hurrying me in the mornings so he would not be late for band. When we got his first 6th grade report card, his father and I almost fell over dead because he had an A. And to this day, he continues to make As in math. And I'd like to add that today, he passed his math SOL. And my son has even made the honor roll this year, this is a huge thing for him. Also, the school year's almost over, and he has perfect attendance. My son takes pride in coming home from school and playing me a piece of music that he's learned in school. He loves the fact that he can show his musician mother a piece of his sheet music, and I had no idea what it is. If any of you have been to these concerts that this middle school band has been on, you'll see how hard these children and these teachers have worked, and how much pride that they have. Also, if you look, there's been a lot of research done on music and learning instruments in school, how much it helps their math grade, teaches them to focus and concentrate, improve in their memory.
I don't interrupt you, you're only allowed three minutes. And let me tell you.
Okay, I'm almost finished.
Let me tell you, what you're talking about has not been discussed, so I don't, you know, we have not discussed deleting band at any school or anything else, so.
Okay, I'll just hear basically rumors I've heard.
Fear of whatever, but you know, you need to check into rumors more before you address some of these things because that's, right now, that's all that is. So if you proceed, it's just kind of limited there.
Right. Well, the whole point I'm trying to get into is I hope this doesn't happen, because it has made a huge impact on my life and others. I hope that they can do even better than myself, and it has really changed my child, and it's done a complete good mistake, so thank you. And let's listen. Thank you.
Anyone else?
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Ms. Hines. And I said, for those of you who do not know me, I'm Andrea Hines, and I'm the band manager at the middle school. And I'm speaking respectfully to the board, and to Mr. Carter, the superintendent, and to you, Ms. Alicia Fields. In terms of whether or not this is a rumor, and Mr. Carter can confirm this because we met recently, at both middle schools, we've been informed, at one middle school via task stream, that the elective for the 6th grade is going to be eliminated. And it's going to be two math classes, two reading classes, history, science, and PE at the 6th grade level. At Pennington Middle School, this was announced in a faculty meeting and announced to the student body. So it's not a rumor, and I just wanted to set that straight. And that's all I want to clarify, thank you.
Let me certify that the board has not discussed any curriculum changes for next year.
I understand, I just, I wanted to make sure you all knew that.
Let's get that real clear.
Well, I'm not.
This board has not discussed any curriculum changes for next year.
Okay, sir, I'm not.
Mr. Carter?
I'm not coming to fuss or throw tomatoes or anything like that. I just wanted to make sure that you understood that right now, we're being told that this is going to be, most likely go through. And I'm not trying to be disrespectful.
Mr. Chairman, board members, I did meet with Ms. Hines yesterday, with Mr. Belcher, and with Mr. Harding and Mr. Beaver Giglio. And certainly, there's not been anything done to try to hurt or harm any program or any area of our curriculum at all. As the board is well aware, we have six schools in the county that are accredited with warning in math. We are under a school improvement plan for those six schools, as well as the division, to improve our math scores. And the Office of School Improvement of the Department of Education has a contractor that is working with the division now to try to implement our school improvement plan. And it is their recommendation that we spend more time on math instruction for the purpose of intervention, remediation, application, in order to try to improve student achievement and improve our student outcomes in math. And one of the ways, certainly, I think that the Department of Ed feels, and I guess we feel as well, that we can do that, is by spending more time with students, having the teachers spend more instructional time with the students to actually implement intervention, remediation, and application. That's part of the improvement plan, it's actually a recommendation from the Department of Education that we do this. So in order to improve our math scores, that one of the things that we have decided to do is to try to work out so that the students would have two periods of math, hopefully back-to-back, and I may not be able to work out in every situation, so the teacher will have a longer period of time to work with those students to try to improve those scores. If we don't improve those scores, it's not going to be recommendations from the Department of Ed, it's going to be requirements from the Department of Ed, it's not going to be a matter of whether this board or our central office, or the schools, or anyone else in Lee County wants to do what needs to be done to improve the math scores, we will probably end up under a memorandum of understanding, as I passed a newsletter out, you know, and another division in the state is actually going through that right now. And it won't be a choice that we'll have, the state will actually be telling us, they won't be recommending, but they'll actually be telling us what we're going to do in order to improve the scores. As far as the OEI, we're going to talk about that just a little bit. As most of you know, Governor McDonnell, before he left office, approved and implemented an Opportunity Education Institute for schools that are failing. And of course, there's a current lawsuit going on over that, but as of right now, that's still in place, excuse me. So either, you know, we'll end up with a memorandum of understanding, or if our schools are accredited for three years, three consecutive years with warning in math, then the OEI can take those skills over. And that means that this board will lose total control of those boards, and it will actually be operated by the Opportunity Education Institute Board of Directors or board that the governor has appointed himself. We're trying to prevent that, we're certainly not trying to, it's not our intention at all to hurt or to harm any program, it's just that there's not enough hours in the day when it comes, and the only grade that would be affected would be 6th grade. But as far as making a curriculum change, we're not, we're just adding another period in math, and it's going to be difficult for those 6th graders to have enough time in the day. I mean, we could extend the school day, and that might be something that we might want to look at doing, but regardless, if we don't address the math situation, the state's going to address it for us. And the thing of it is, math is one of the areas, we test in four areas for SOLs. Of course, that's math in the elementary and middle school, that's math, English, or reading, language arts, writing, science, and social studies. And those are the areas that we have to concentrate on for our schools to be accredited. And all we're trying to do is try to do what's in the best interest of our schools and our school system, to improve those scores so that we can actually be fully accredited. And it does concern me that we do have six schools right now that are accredited with warning, and that is the subject that we're accredited with warning in is math. So we're trying to take steps, we're not trying to eliminate band, we're certainly trying to take steps to remedy the problem and provide those students with more instructional time so that they can actually have higher achievement in math and better outcomes. As far as band is concerned, I certainly am an advocate of band, Mr. Twigg knows I have a son myself. And I explained this to Ms. Hines, because she, I think, knows that, she remembers my oldest son, he lived and dreamed of band, that's why that gave him an outlet at school, he loved it. And I was telling them, you know, we begged, borrowed, and pleaded from grandmas, grandpas, aunts, uncles, and everybody else, but I had a very sad feeling since then, and we did that. He loved band, that's what kept him involved here. So I'm certainly a big advocate for band and for, you know, the course program. Not against it at all, but we have to look at what the state is actually grading us on, scoring us on, and rating us on, and holding us accountable for. And that is those four areas that they test us in, and Lee County right now has six schools that are accredited with warning in math, and two of those schools, this is their third year. And after they're accredited for three years, the Opportunity Educational Institute, if that continues to go through, can take those skills over. And of course, I'm going to give a little bit of report just a little bit later on in the meeting about the OEI and the lawsuit, but that's where we're at, and we're certainly, I don't want any parents or anyone else, and as far as the board making a change in the curriculum, the board has not, we're only following the recommendations that the Department of Ed has given us under the school improvement plan to try to remedy the problems that we have with math, and that's all we're trying to do. Certainly not trying to hurt any program or any area of the curriculum at all. I would certainly hope that, you know, that I could try to explain that to the teachers and vineyards that I met with yesterday, and I mean, all we're trying to do is do what's best for our school system and for our students.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Donna Mellon, and I just totally agree that my math scores are really sad. And.
Don, if you're pulled up now.
Sure. If it comes to the point where we have to have, why don't, this is just a suggestion, we might give PE. But anyhow, really, as you know, we cannot, we can't hurt this. It goes all the way up into high school. It, it, you can see the differences. It's amazing, and getting rid of it, even in the sixth grade, would be very harmful.
Thank you, Donna. Any one? Okay, moving on to the report section. The annual retirement dinner is due on the fifth, 2014, six o'clock, at Lee Theater. Mr. Carter?
Mr. Chairman, our retirement dinner will be held on June the fifth at, at six at Lee Theater, and certainly would like to invite all of our board members to attend that if you're able to do so.
The Advanced Ed External Review, February fifteenth, eighteen, two thousand fifteen?
Just again, we received a letter from the Advanced Ed advising us that our accreditation with the Advanced Ed will expire on June the thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, and we do have our external review scheduled for February the fifteenth through the eighteenth of two thousand fifteen.
The OEI lawsuit update?
There's a news release from the Virginia School Board Association, date that for the twenty-first, which is an update on the Opportunity Educational Institute lawsuit. And the V S B A in this lawsuit has been deemed to have a standing case, and after establishing that V S B A has a standing case, Judge Austin heard arguments by counsel for both parties, and a ruling was not issued, and the parties haven't made the field to submit any additional information to court. Of course, you have that information in your packet.
School board budget update for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year?
Basically, we still have no additional information on, on the budget. As most of you are aware, we have four budget proposals out there, and there's really no action in the General Assembly at this point that we're aware of to remedy that situation. So hopefully, before the end of June, we'll have a budget.
And we were told last Thursday that the budget might not even be until August?
Possible.
Enrollment?
Enrollment, as of the end of April, was that three thousand one hundred and eighty-four students. That's down two from last month, and down nine from this same period last year.
Financial report?
Denise was not able to be with us tonight, so I'll give the financial report and the general fund. State allocations, two million, forty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and six cents. Federal, three hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-two cents. Global, three thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents. Insurance, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. Revenues to month are two million, seven hundred and five thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-four cents. Revenues year-to-date, twenty-seven million, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-two cents. Expenditures. Accounts payable, payroll is two million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. Accounts payable is four hundred and thirty-three thousand, twenty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents, for a total of two million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. Title I, one hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and seven cents. Head Start, eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. Insurance, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-six, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents. Expenditures month-to-date is three million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. And expenditures year-to-date is twenty-six million, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-two cents. And we have used sixty-seven point nineteen percent of appropriation, and revenues we've received, sixty-nine point fifty-one percent.
Next on the action agenda items, A, consider approval of Tri-State Chemical Janitorial Supplies Contract renewal. Carter?
Mr. Chairman, Tri-State Chemical has agreed to honor their prices for last year for bidding, so we would recommend that the board approve Tri-State Chemical for the upcoming year.
Mr. Chairman, would you approve that? Motion second. Second. Have a motion second. Any discussion? On my first say aye. Contract is renewed. Consider approval of Rott Pest Elimination Contract renewal. Carter?
Rott Pest Control has also agreed to continue providing their services, again, for another year at the exact same bid price for this, for this current year, and I would recommend approval.
Could I have a motion as such?
Big motion.
Have a motion in the second. Second. Motion second. Any discussion? On my first say aye. Motion carries. Item C, consider approval of Forces of Lee County Career and Technical Center. Mr. Carter?
As the board has a copy of recommendation from Mr. Welch, he is recommending that we consider adding carpentry next year, possibly farm machinery repair, and C and A. I have spoken with Mr. Welch, and in the absence of a budget, would certainly love to see these programs, but in the absence of a budget, I'd recommend that the board table this until we have a budget, but we wanted that information out there so you can be thinking about it.
Have a motion to take it with. Make a motion to take it on. Have a motion of a second. Second. Have a motion, say any discussion? Item C, it is tabled for the time being. Item D, consider approval of Science Textbook Adoption for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year?
Mr. Chairman, we've had textbook adoption committee that have met and have gone through the textbooks that were available, and we do have a split there. I kind of kidded with the textbook committee and told them they were kind of at the General Assembly, they couldn't come to an agreement, and they didn't, but they did choose, I will say in their defense, they did choose the book that they felt like was the best and most appropriate for their grade level, and certainly, we want them to be able to have the book that they feel like that will best benefit them, and certainly reaching and, and helping students to achieve in science, since that is one of the areas that we do test in SOLs. But K through five has chosen Holden-Mifflin, and six through twelve has chosen McGraw-Hill. I would recommend that the board approve that.
Have a motion, a motion of a second. Second. Have a motion, say any discussion? On my first say aye. The textbooks are approved. Consider approval, item E, consider approval of Head Start Manual Development.
Denise, I'd like to recommend that you approve the Head Start manuals that were included in your packet, which were the community assessment, okay, the self-assessment, and the personnel policies and procedures. I'll make that motion.
Have a motion of a second. Second. Have a motion, say any discussion? On my first say aye. The textbooks are approved. Consider approval, item G, consider approval of Extended School Year Services, June tenth, two thousand fourteen, through June twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that the board, this is something that we ask to approve each year, and would like to ask you to consider approval of the Extended School Year from June tenth through June twenty-sixth.
Have a motion to continue the school year. Take a motion. Have a motion of a second. Second. Have a motion, say any discussion? On my first say aye. The motions carries. Item G, consider approval of Summer School at Thomas Walker High School, June ninth, two thousand fourteen, through July first, two thousand fourteen. Mr. Carter?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Stewart was unable to be here this afternoon. I'd just like to ask the board to approve our summer school program for high school students at Thomas Walker this year. We rotate that between Lee High School and Thomas Walker this year, it's Thomas Walker's turn.
They have a motion. Still moving. Have a motion of a second. Second. Have a motion, say any discussion? On my first say aye. The motion carries. Item H, consider approval of the Summer Nutrition Program with Appalachian Community Action Agency at Thomas Walker High School, Peachtree Millsville, St. Charles Elementary, June sixteenth, two thousand fourteen, through August eighth, two thousand fourteen. Mr. Carter?
Mr. Chairman, we provided this feeding program through Appalachian Community Action Agency. Last year was their first time for doing that. They do have a grant that actually pays for that. It's a service that we can provide to the students, and actually adults can actually eat for a nominal fee, but any, anyone that's under eighteen years of age can eat free. And we plan on providing that at St. Charles, or any of the middle, or Thomas Walker, and would like to ask the board to approve it.
Mr. Chairman, is this the same locations as last year, or different? Do you remember?
Well, we did at Lee High School, but I just keep it up. Because of summer school.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion of a second. Second. Have a motion, say any discussion? On my first say aye. The motion carries. Item J, consider approval of the Resolution commemorating the sixtieth anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education. Mr. Carter?
Mr. Chairman, board members, the Virginia School Board Association Board of Directors unanimously approved a resolution commemorating the sixtieth anniversary of the United States Supreme Court's decision, Brown versus Board of Education, saying it has a profound, significant, and beneficial impact on all aspects of life in the United States. The Virginia School Board Association Board of Directors encourages Virginia school boards to pass similar resolutions in commemoration of the historic civil rights decisions made on August seventeenth, nineteen fifty-four, and encourages direct student participation through essays, creative arts, lectures, research and writing, community projects, and other activities to foster personal commitment to, to democracy. We do have a resolution that we would like to ask the board to consider in commemoration of the sixtieth anniversary.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion of a second. Second. Have a motion of a second. Any discussion? On my first say aye. The motion carries. Item J, consider approval of the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen health insurance. Mr. Carter?
Mr. Chairman, we're pleased to present the health insurance premiums and the same coverage again for this coming year for our employees is what we've had for the past five years, and of course, that within itself is renowned, that we've been able to provide the same coverage at the same price for about a long period of time. Do want to say that, that probably, looking for next year, there's going to have to be some changes next year in, in our, either our coverage or our premiums. We're probably, this will be the last year that we'll be able to go without an increase in premiums, because we are going to be taking somewhat of a hit in our insurance fund in order to do this for one more year. We're actually, we're working on this, and some of the changes that kind of came about, we felt like was a little bit late this year for us to address those with our staffs and our employees, so we want to continue one more year, and we think we can do that safely, at the same premiums and the same price as what we, same coverage as what we've had for the past several years, but probably, just to warn everyone, we're going to have to take a look next year at either increasing premiums or, or look at, look at some of the coverage.
I'll make that motion, we approve.
Have a motion of a second. Second. Have a motion, say any discussion? On my first say aye. The textbooks are approved. Need a motion to pay the bills?
Make the motion to pay the bills.
Have a motion of a second. Second. Have a motion, say any discussion? On my first say aye. The textbooks are approved. Need a motion to pay the bills?
Make the motion to pay the bills.
Have a motion of a second. Second. Have a motion, say any discussion? On my first say aye. The bills are paid. Reports of recommendations of the board, Mr. Twigg?
Yes, sir. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all the teachers, and not just the ones who received awards tonight, but all the teachers throughout whole county, and also the students who received awards tonight. And another area, I am kind of concerned about this sixth grade issue, and, you know, I'm kind of upset in a way, because, you know, I feel as a board member, especially as an old band director, I should at least have a common courtesy, you know, to call us and tell us that this is going to be sent out by the way of task stream, or whichever way it was done. And anyway, I just think that we as board members should have been notified before we sent out to the teachers and faculty and all the other schools. And also, I mean, you know, I'm not too up on the State Department of Education, and everybody knows that, and, you know, I'm able to have my own, you know, my personal opinion, and, you know, they're always supposed to have math scores and English scores, well, you know, they want to have math scores. Take the damn calculators out of the third layer stands, and then learn to do the Tri-State again. Instead, we don't, can't do that. But anyway, this is really hit nervously. I talked to Mr. Sage, the guy that was here that made all these reports and recommendations, and every, everything that I asked him, he gave an answer that he was getting from the state, nothing that he could give the person. So I just figured, you know, there's standing down people here that are actually puppets with the Department of Education, that are going to go along with their curriculum guidelines, which I don't really agree with anyway. But, so, you know, this is where we talked about two months ago. We are killing these teachers. We've got these fifteen, twenty-page lesson plans, and I don't care whether you say it helps or it doesn't, you know, it's just too much. Then we put the, the stress of SOLs on them, and they go from year to year, year to year, and I understand, and I agree with the handout standards. I also agree there has to be a line drawn somewhere. But, you know, I just think the State Department needs to, you know, I hate to say it, but, you know, to me, they're, a bunch of bureaucrats that's been out of the education system for thirty-four years, and I think they need to have a touch of reality. They need to sit in classrooms and see how these teachers have worked, how these kids have prepared, you know, and just go at it from a different angle. But I'm really upset about all the band stuff that's going on, not just band, the music and generally the arts, and I would never, I would never, as long as I'm on the score road, to do anything. Another thing, I'd like to read you something, and you probably may recognize the quote, or you may not, but it says, "All of us do not have equal talents, but all of us should have an equal opportunity to develop our talents." That quote was by President John F. Kennedy, nineteen sixty-two, to the Department of Education. Thank you.
First off, I'd like to thank Mrs. Warner and the staff for welcoming us and hosting us here at Lee High. I, I was kind of anxious to see the, the redone auditorium, and I hope we were able to keep it in this type of condition also. So again, thank you. I'd like to thank those students who did participate in the V S B A art contest, and also to congratulate the teachers, schoolteachers with Teacher of the Year, and also, yay, Lee High for having Division Teacher of the Year. And also, I want to thank the, the teachers and staff members who are going to be retiring at the end of this year, and thank you for your service. And thinking about testing a little bit for what Mr. Twigg said, since we are in SOL testing, is it general, everything going smooth?
Need a motion to consider approval of overnight field trips in your packet?
Make the motion. I approve.
Have a motion, say second. Have a motion, say any discussion? On our favor, say aye. Those field trips are approved. Need a motion to pay the bills?
Make the motion to pay the bills.
Have a motion of the second. Have a motion, say any discussion? On our favor, say aye. Those bills are paid. Reports or recommendations of the board, Mr. Twig.
Yes, sir. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all the teachers, and not just the ones who received awards tonight, but all the teachers throughout whole county, and also the students who received awards tonight. And another area, I am kind of concerned about this sixth grade issue, and, you know, I'm kind of upset in a way, because, you know, I feel as a board member, especially as an old band director, I should at least have a common courtesy, you know, to call us and tell us that this is going to be sent out by the way of TOS or whichever way it's done. And anyway, I just think that we as board members should have been notified before we sent out to the teachers and faculty and all the other schools. And also, I mean, you know, I'm not too up on State Department of Education, and everybody knows that, and, you know, I don't think they're heavily on around it, in my personal opinion. And, you know, they're always fussing about math scores and English scores, well, you know, they want to help math scores. Take the damn calculators out of the third layer stands and learn how to do the math papers again. Instead, we don't, can't do that. This is really hit nervously. I talked to Mr. Sage, the guy that was here that made all these reports and recommendations, and every, everything that I asked him, he gave an answer that he was getting from the state, nothing that he could give personally. So I just figured, you know, they're sending down people here that are actually puppets with the Department of Education that are going to go along with their curriculum guidelines, which I don't really agree with anyway. But, so, you know, this is where we talked about two months ago. We are killing these teachers. We've got this 15, 20-page lesson plans, and I don't care whether you say it helps or it doesn't, you know, it's just too much. Then we put the stress of SOLs on them, and they go from year to year to year to year. And I understand, and I agree with the management standards. Also, a creator has to be aligned somewhere. But, you know, I just think the State Department needs to, you know, I hate to say it, but, you know, to me, they're a bunch of bureaucrats that's been out of the education system for 30 or 40 years, and I think they need to have a touch of reality. They need to sit in classrooms and see how these teachers have, how these kids have prepared, you know, and just go at it from a different angle. But I'm really upset about all the band stuff that's going on, not just band, the music and general, the arts, and I would never, I would never, as long as I'm on the score road, to do away with this. Another thing, I'd like to read you something, and you probably may recognize the quote, or you may not, but it says, "All of us do not have equal talents, but all of us should have an equal opportunity to develop our talents." That quote was by President John F. Kennedy, 1962, to the Department of Education. Thank you.
First off, I'd like to thank Mrs. Warner and the staff for welcoming us and hosting us here at Lee High. I was kind of anxious to see the redone auditorium, and I hope we were able to keep it in this type of condition also. So again, thank you. I'd like to thank those students who did participate in the VSBAR contest, and also to congratulate the teachers, schoolteachers with Teacher of the Year, and also, and yay Lee High for having Division Teacher of the Year. And also, I want to thank the teachers and staff members who are going to be retiring at the end of this year, and thank you for your service. And thinking about testing a little bit for what Mr. Twig said, since we are in SOL testing, is it general, everything going smooth?
So far, it is, yes.
Do we have any kind of preliminary results, that things look like they're going well?
Some schools are going well, some schools are not so well.
That's a real report there. It's a reality.
This is spur of the moment.
It's a reality.
The other thing, too, is a couple of weeks ago, we were able to have kind of an enhanced drill as far as tornado preparation was concerned. I hope we are reviewing our procedures and things to make adjustments. Hopefully, we never will have an actual one, but sometimes it is a little bit more than announcement over the loudspeaker to say, oh, it's time for a tornado drill, that we need to have a little bit more. And I just want to say amen a little bit to just what Mr. Twig said. Thank you.
I guess I could say amen to Miss Jesse and Mr. Twig also. I did want to ask about the status of the use of the Odysseyware program, if there's any progress on the policy.
I haven't started, it's working, so it's not here, I can't tell you exactly where they're at. Odysseyware.
You know, I guess if I've got anything to say, it's, because I agree with practically everything that's been said tonight. And, you know, setting up here on the school board, it's never an easy thing. I'm going to say it's about the third time I've ever said this, you have to support a lot of things up here that you don't believe in, because that's the law and that's the rule. I've said over and over again, and I'm going to say it again tonight, I think SOLs are the worst thing that ever hit the school system in the United States, but there's not one thing I can do that's true. And I do support them, because that's what we have to do. As far as anything anti-band, I know that ex-football coaches and ex-band directors are not supposed to get along together at all. But I never had a closer friend when I was at Lee High than Mr. Twig, and I begged him for years, all the years I was here, to let me lead the band for one quarter. And he never would let me do that. But I have a grandson that's coming into the sixth grade, and I'm begging him to take band. So it's not anybody on this board that is against band. I didn't even hear about this until tonight, and I didn't even know what we were talking about here. So I don't think you have to have concerns about anybody on this board being against it, because I know they're not. But the same is, if they pass that law, that we've got to do it, then we'll have to do whatsoever there, and we're going to have to adjust around whatever we can do. And also, I'd like to say I thank Lee High School here and the administration and so forth for allowing us to meet here tonight. If some of you are in here for the first time, why, half a million dollars worth of renovation was done to this beautiful place here tonight, and it's an honor to be here. And we thank you very much for that. Mr. Twig, would you re-ascend to executive session, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we go to executive session to consider Personnel Section 2.2-3711A1, and consultation with legal counsel, and pending litigation, Section 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia.
Can I have a second? Have a motion, second. On our favor, say aye.